Good morning again. Hi, Dan, it's good to see you.
Good morning.
All right, well, it is. Close enough to ten o'clock. We probably have what, ten seconds before it's ten officially? So, um, Dan, you are next on our list. Take her away.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Mark. Uh, just looking to give a brief update to you on our program report in our, in, in your packet, you did receive our winter fall program report. It's, is a pretty comprehensive program as, uh, to a look as to see what we've been doing on the extension programs. I do want to take this time to introduce two new staff to you. You've seen some of them on Commissioner calls earlier and having to vote on certain pieces, but we never actually did an official, here's who they are and, and, and the welcome. It was all business for some of them to start with. So I'd love to introduce you to Kella to start with. Kella is our Noxious Weed Program Coordinator. She started in November with us. And, uh, Kella, do you want to talk a little bit about what you've been up to?
Yeah, um, so hello again, uh, official introduction today, I guess. Um, so I, yeah, I started in, uh, late November, early December, and I historically actually worked with the program, uh, for a year and a half under Pat Grover. So, um, it was a hurdle to like, start the program kind of mid-report season, but also I had that prior knowledge, so that was really helpful. Um, but anyways, in those four months that I've been working here, um, been doing a lot of final reporting, um, applying for grant applications, et cetera, and starting out some events and workshops. Um, so actually yesterday I had my first workshop of the year, which was on Scotch broom, and I partnered with the Alderbrook Environmental Committee, um, and we had a really good turnout and talked about the natural history of Scotch broom, how to control it, et cetera. And I wanted to also highlight a few upcoming events. Um, I'd talked about a giant hogweed workshop that I have in the works. So that is, um, will be funded through the State Department of Agriculture's, uh, Giant Hogweed Eradication Funding. And that'll be coming up on April twenty-seventh, and that'll be at the Public Works Conference Room. Uh, really excited about that, to be able to spread the word about that noxious weed. Um, we have a fair amount of infestations here in Mason County. Um, and it's the program's, um, utmost kind of desire to eradicate those, those populations, given the public health hazard giant hogweed can pose. Um, so other than workshops, kind of gearing up for the field season here, getting ready by, uh, doing some hiring processes for our Noxious Weed Specialist Position, Noxious Weed Inspector Position, um, and a potential internship, um, through the Veteran Conservation Corps Program to have an intern from the VCC support our program needs. Um, so kind of getting some people into the office, getting prepared for that field season that's coming. Um, and continuously trying to find board members. We talked about that last briefing I was here. Um, I'm still looking, um, and still spreading the word, um, for Mason County Noxious Weed Control Board members who are primary agricultural producers who could represent, um, three of our open vacant districts. So if you have any ideas, please, please give them my contact information. I'm really willing to talk with people about what that responsibility looks like. Um, and also just do weedy site visits, weed identification, spread, spread my contact information wide. Um, so yeah, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself a little bit more formally.
Thanks, Kella. And next, I'd like to introduce, um, Tessa. Tessa is our Master Gardener Coordinator, Small Farms Coordinator as well. Tessa started in January with us. Um, Tessa, do you want to speak a little bit about to the work you've been doing?
Yeah, so, hi, my name is Tessa. Um, I, uh, yeah, started at the end of January. Um, I have a background in horticulture, small farming, and most recently I worked doing education outreach for gardens, um, at the Cowlets Tribe. And so with Master Gardeners, um, they just finished up their, uh, huge series of Through the Garden Gate workshops, um, which was six hybrid workshops that were out at Public Works and over Zoom. Um, we averaged about seventy to ninety participants combined every time, which was a really wonderful turnout. Um, and they were just on all different topics to get gardeners ready for spring, vegetable gardening, pruning native plants, all sorts of awesome stuff. Um, and then we've also been working on the Catalyst Community Garden, which has, um, they redid a lot of the beds out there. There's twenty-four beds that are available for a very small fee for community gardeners to, um, or community members to rent. And so they are now going to be getting automatic irrigation to help with water conservation. Um, they have ADA accessible beds. They have all sorts of different formats to demonstrate different raised bed gardening techniques to people. Um, and so that's been something we're working on is getting community gardeners in there. Um, and then on the small farm side of things, uh, there's a collaboration between WSU Extension and Washington Seagrant. Um, they are looking to train community members to scout for European green crab mults, um, and report them using an app. And so coming up in May, I'll be facilitating a workshop for that, um, which will be at the Public Works Building. Um, and then I'm also just working on planning some other future workshops and making contacts and, and developing things on that side. So yeah, thanks for letting me introduce myself.
Welcome. As you can as you can see, Commissioners, uh, we have hired some tremendously amazing and talented staff that have hit the ground running. So I appreciate all that they're doing and, uh, the opportunities that they're exploring and, um, moving our program in a positive direction as always. Um, over the weekend, I had the opportunity to work as well. Uh, we trained forty, uh, youth counselors over the weekend on ages and stages of youth development. Uh, there are camp counseling staff that we're building towards for our summer camp program. So we had a wonderful opportunity to work with some young people to develop those skill sets as well. Um, the last one I almost want to talk about, and you can go through the program report, uh, on your own, and if you have any questions about that, please let, let me know. But the last one I want to hit on is not in the program report, but, um, WSU Extension, the state level, has been very active with broadband expansion and equity work. And I'm on, um, the state grant for that to extend, to expand broadband across Washington State. Um, been working with Gray's Harbor, uh, Broadband Action Team for quite a while, and I was, um, active in getting today a meeting going to get the Mason County Broadband Action Team formally started. So this is a grant from the Washington State Broadband Office to create these digital plans for each county and tribe to have ready-to-go plans when the federal dollars come into our state. So we have a very tight timeline of, uh, beginning of June to get all these plans in the state broadband office. We have some tremendous opportunities here, and I'm excited to get that work done. I know that I met with, um, Commissioner Shutey, um, before, before this. And Dustin Loop is someone that we've hired into the extension program to help manage this entire program for us. So, um, it's exciting work. It's a bit daunting work. Um, but it's exciting nonetheless. There will be some pass-through dollars available for Mason County from our office. Probably around thirty thousand dollars to help with the facilitation of digital equity work in our area as well. So some tremendous opportunity. We have some amazing partners in Mason County who are building our infrastructure for digital connectivity. So it's great to bring them all to the table. So, and one last piece on that, um, Commissioner Rains in Gray's Harbor County nominated me to serve on WASAC's Broadband Advisory Committee. So now I am, I get the honor of representing Gray's Harbor County at that table. I will also have my ear to Mason County as well, although I won't speak for Mason County. I will bring back and also try to represent Mason County a, as well, because those are my, my two regions that I, 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 I do serve. So are there any questions on that, Commissioners?
That's exciting news. That's awesome.
Congratulations on the appointment.
Right? Right, making people a good person. Awesome.
That's fair. If it's condolences or congratulations, but it's, it's, uh, it's a good opportunity to serve. So I'm, I'm happy to, to do that. So Commissioners, I want to thank you again for your opportunity, um, to work with you on lots of things. Our partnership is fantastic and look forward to the work ahead. So that's my briefing.
All right. Yeah, reviewing your, your presentation today. Um, and your garden beds look so much better than mine. I find mine lacking. So you guys are amazing.
Our master gardeners are very, very talented. Absolutely.
Yes, and the four, the things that you're doing with our youth for, for four H. Um, I think I mentioned before, my kids were in four H and, and they absolutely loved it. And so to, I'm working on my grandkids, trying to get them going also. They're limited on space, but you know, how much room does a chicken take? I don't know.
Not very much.
Not much, right?
I love it. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Anything for, uh, WSU Extension Commissioners?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick, I have a quick question for Kella. Is there any way to identify individuals within the county that would be eligible to serve on the weed, weed board and then and then kind of do targeted recruitment?
Yeah, I've started doing a little bit of cold calling based off of, actually, it's been really helpful. The, um, WSU Extension has a Farm Fresh Guide, which, uh, outlines or kind of, uh, highlights different farms in Mason County that do, um, predominantly vegetable production, flower production. So I've been using that to start cold calling people in the districts that we, um, have some vacancies. I'm also utilizing our board member, current board members and their networks. Although it can get kind of complicated because their networks are primarily in the geographical district that they represent, but I've been using them to kind of, um, start doing some contact with, uh, seafood companies, people who are doing seafood aquaculture along the Hood Canal. I would love to have someone who represents the shellfish industry on the board because I think the connection with noxious weeds along shoreline, uh, European green crab on shoreline. There's a lot of different connections there, and it'd be great to have some voices from that community. Um, but I've been using basically the Farm Fresh Guide. Um, I would, if anybody has any ideas about, um, timber owner organizations and groups, I know that there's a few working groups that, um, some Mason County representation on, uh, kind of small-scale forestry owners uh, or larger scale. If anybody has any ideas as to organizations that I might be able to get in contact with, um, because timber owners are also certainly primary agricultural producers and noxious weeds impact timberland for sure. So if anybody has any ideas, I'm very open to suggestions. Um, but yeah, starting cold calling, that, I think that's actually going to be the most success is really having some in-person or over-the-phone contact, um, explaining our program, exploring the, explaining the importance of our program. So.
So if you
Oh, go ahead, Mark.
So once you identify those names, Kella, I think if you share those with us, um, then maybe we could get our Commissioners to reach out too, you know? A call from the county commissioner expressing the importance of participation, uh, within our, our weed board, um, might help kind of push them over the, over the edge.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. I can send out an email again with some names, um, in the district and kind of a little spiel of what their, what their primary ag, um, investment would be. Thank you.
I wonder if reaching out to the Conservation District also, um, there was Alex over in our Health, Health Department for shellfish.
Oh, he?
What's that?
Ian Tracy?
Yes. Yeah.
Ooh.
Um, he might be a good contact also.
Okay, very cool. Um, kind of water quality in, in that department. Great. I will absolutely contact them. That is not someone that I've, um, contacted yet. And I'm working with the Conservation District. They've been really helpful getting the word out as well because they have a few working groups that they're, they're working with. Um, so yeah, thank you. Thank you for that suggestion.
Yeah, I was just gonna, as the, remind me again where the openings are. It's, it's Hood Sport, Potlatch area and Tahuya.
Yes, so, um, District One, which is, um, west to Matlock, south to the Thurston County boundary. It also includes Shelton, the city of Shelton. I think that one, we have a fair amount of primary ag producers, so I've been trying to do some cold calling in that district. Um, District Four, which is, let me confirm that, sorry. District Four is, um, Belfair to Tahuya area. Um, and then District Five, which is north of Potlatch, um, up into Hood Sport, um, and then to the boundary with Jefferson County.
Okay.
And on that email, we'll also attach or embed the, the image of the map, the weed district map, just so people have a visual idea of where those vacancies are.
Great. Thank you. Anything else for WSU? All right.
Thank you.
Guys.
Thanks, everybody.
And happy birthday, Commissioner.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to, um, Support Services, Mark.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, good morning. So we've got, uh, up on our first item on our list is the twenty-twenty-three M C R A concession services. I was looking for John. I just texted Diane. Diane, are you gonna take this one, or would you like to move on and come back when he gets on?
Um, I can. It looks like it's time to issue an RFP for our concessionaire out at M C R A. The last contract, it actually ends in March of twenty-three, so we need to get ready for the season. So we would like to issue the RFP, and then it'll be due the first part of April.
Sounds good.
Me. Just to remind the Commissioners on these, um, you know, we, we sometimes are able to do contract extensions, um, but after a period of time, we need to open them back up to the community to make sure if there's somebody else that's interested in providing those services that meets the requirements associated with providing this type of service on public property. Um, there's requirements associated with services for the blind and those items. Um, so we, we would definitely want to open it up and see if any, somebody else is interested too. But the people have been, that have been providing services at M C R A are absolutely amazing. So hopefully they reapply.
And then Commissioners, can I add this to, to tomorrow's agenda?
It's good with me.
I have no problem. Now, I know that there's been a shift in that, in that particular business. Are they still willing? Has anybody reached out to them to see if they're still?
I do not. I have a note to myself to ask staff if they've talked to, because, um, Mendoza has had the contract out there for a number of years. As far as I know, he's still willing to continue. But I don't know.
Well, I know he sold some of his stuff.
Okay.
Well.
Hopefully.
We should reach out and just call him and find out, because.
Yes, I'll do that. Thank you.
Great. So we'll move that on to the agenda tomorrow. The next item is Mary.
Morning Commissioners. Back again, talking about Classic Comp. I know you're probably sick hearing about it. We want to bring forward, based on the input we've received so far from the Commissioners, um, two separate options for consideration and then potentially creation of a resolution and moving these options forward. Really quickly, I wanted to back up though and remind the Commissioners and, um, anyone that's attending that the Classic Comp Project, our seven comparable counties, matches were based on seventy percent essential functions of the position descriptions that were submitted by each department back in the summer, August-ish, July-ish, and what we submitted to the consultants. Um, we have twenty-twenty-two data available. And the initial couple of green things had to do with the twenty-twenty-two data. Luckily, we've had twenty-twenty-three data become available from our comps, which then we were able to compare with our, um, one point seven five across the board that went to the non-rep scale. So we were able to refresh the data and now have a, a updated look. And so option one on your handouts, with the twenty-twenty-two data, so the data from last year, not taking into consideration what has been updated or our one point seven five. Um, and then looking at the cost of the range realignment would be two seventy-six oh four oh approximately. And then option two in your packet would be a, uh, iterative approach to utilizing the twenty-twenty-three data. So for twenty-twenty-three, um, I would say hopefully, my hope would be like an April first action would be to move, um, the first group here to address seven point five percent in undermarket at this time. And the cost would be two thirty-one seventy-nine-ish. And then for twenty-twenty-four, continue to make up our twenty-twenty-three deficit in the market. And the cost for that one would be forty-nine one four hundred approximately. So taking kind of a stepped approach and an iterative approach, so it's not a big hit to the budget all at once. It spreads it out, and we can also take time to as issues come up. Uh, there are already a couple that have been identified, whether it's compression or a position description that needs to be reviewed, or we need to move some things from class back, or whatever the change needs to be addressed, that we have flexibility to do that. But that this would be our plan at this time, and then as we need to address any other issues that we would be able to come back to the board and do that. And so also attached in your packet is what the new range alignments would look like on a non-rep scale with each, uh, year. We'd have to, uh, add a couple different ranges, so a new forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine to accommodate market changes. And then, um, you can see that in twenty-twenty-four, the change is less than a little bit. Um, and hopefully everyone will be to market with the twenty-twenty-three data as it's being presented to the consultant at this time. So today, just looking for whether we'd like option one, option two, if we don't like either option, and hopefully have a decision to move forward with the resolution on how to implement, um,
All right. Any questions from, uh, Commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have questions.
Comments?
I like the idea of breaking the, the strategy up. I like the idea of, uh, it actually becoming our policy on how we do things by breaking it up and doing it the way that she was talking about. We actually create a a consistent path for fixing the issues every year, something we've never done in all the years that have been here. Everything has always been, there's either a fire that's happening, we have to put it out, or some other issue that creates, uh, a lot of, uh, waves all, all over the place. But by having a straight-out compensation strategy that's addressed every year, the way that Mary has put forward, I think that's great policy for all of us, and it'll help keep us up, uh, in the future as well, and not just a one-time shot in the arm.
All right, I do see a hand up, um, our undershare. Would Commissioners mind if we call on the undershare?
I'm okay.
Good.
Hi, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Sure.
All right, let me turn on my video so you can see my radio face here. All right, there we go. Um, uh, yeah, so I, I just wanted to weigh in on this particular topic since it does impact our, our office, and we haven't had the opportunity to discuss any of the, uh, uh, the proposed changes up until this point. Uh, let me first say that I've got nothing but respect for Mark and Mary and their staff and the work that they've done. I've got no negative comments at all to make. Um, this has been a large-scale project. It has been a long time coming. Um, I understand that they've got some pretty tight parameters that they need to, uh, try to work within if they want to ever finish this project. And so, um, I, I just want you to know that anything I say has nothing to do with, uh, any negative feelings about what's going on there. I do want to point out, however, that, uh, the, the proposed changes as they are right now, um, that they're going to partially fix one of the problems with our chief's pay, but it's going to create another and possibly result in another half problem. And I, I, I don't know that we want to create more problems with some of the changes that we're making. And so I guess what I'm asking at this point is, it's the sheriff's contention that our chiefs are all uh, under one job classification and within the same, uh, same place on the pay scale in the county. And the direction that we're going now is, uh, contrary to that. Uh, this has been a topic that's been around for a long time. As you know, I've been here since the earth cooled, basically, at this point. Um, we talked about this with Bill Kenny, with Frank Pinter, with Deb briefly when she was here. I briefed her. And I've also talked to Mary, um, a little bit about this. So, um, we partially resolved this problem back in two thousand nineteen, actually, with, uh, two of the Commissioners that we have here and work with Frank. We aligned our, um, Corrections Chief with our Patrol Chief. Uh, so there was parity there. However, our Administrative Chief's position, for some reason, was left out of that conversation and that calculation. And we ended up in a place where our patrol, our, uh, Administrative Chief has been paid less than our lieutenants in both Corrections and the Patrol side for, uh, several years now. Um, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me because, um, the chief obviously has greater authority and greater responsibility. But that is not, not been corrected all this time. Uh, I will say, however, that, uh, all, all history aside, we did have a period of time there where we had five chiefs. The conversation was a little bit different back in the time. Um, now we're down to three chiefs. Each one of them share a shen- essential job functions. Um, they, they've got major liabilities that each one of them handles in each of their three divisions, uh, budget oversight, prep, and a lot of the things that, um, those, those positions handle. Another reason why it's important for us that those positions be in the same, uh, job description is because we reassigned chiefs to different divisions depending on what's going on at the time. So we had a patrol chief who was reassigned to the Corrections Division for over half a year at one point. And we have had, uh, commissioned personnel within the Administrative Division on numerous occasions. And so it's, it's important to us that those chiefs fall under the same, same job description. As Mary alluded to, we're also going to have a problem with compression at our mid-management level. As you know, our deputy's contract is currently not resolved, and our sergeants are in that contract as well. Um, they're already within a compression zone within our lieutenants, and that is going to be exacerbated by, by this problem coming up. And then finally, yeah, I would say that it's important because, um, it's an equity issue. It's an equity issue in our office because, um, while it's not the only measure of value, pay is a measure of value that we place on positions within our organization. And the, the sheriff values the three chief positions equally. Uh, they have great responsibility. And we would like to see them be placed under the same, same job classification. So, uh, that's, that's basically what I wanted to get on here and say. Um, I, I think it's a small ask for the county government as a whole, to be quite honest. Um, we only have three chiefs. They're already relatively close together on the pay scale. It's, it's gonna be a uh, de minimis impact on the budget, but it's, it's, uh, it's a big ask for our department because it's important for us to have those, uh, those opportunities. Uh, finally, I'll, I'll let Mary, uh, speak for herself, uh, in, in any way that she wants to. Um, I will say that I, I think it would be fair to say that she agrees with us in principle, if not maybe in timing. Um, I went and talked to Mary about this, and she was super responsive and immediately started working on a job, uh, a job description sheet that encompassed, uh, all three chiefs' jobs, positions, and recognized the essential job functions that they share. And so, um, timing, timing was a, a thing that we didn't necessarily agree on. But, uh, like I said, I've been around here when we've had these conversations with uh, all the way back to Bill Kenny and moving all the way forward, and it never seems like it's a right time, and and we're always pushing a little farther down the road, and I would, I would like to see this one change for our office, um, be made. So anyways, that is my ask. That is what I wanted to bring to the board. Um, again, truly appreciate all the work that Mary and them are doing. Got nothing but, uh, positive things to say about how helpful they've been with me and, uh, talking through this issue and talking about some of the details.
All right, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, although I appreciate, uh, undershare for everything you're saying, I don't think this is the proper venue for it. Uh, we're not having discussions about individuals at this point, uh, and there'd be a process to go through. Mary, she'd bring it back to us through a process. I know for a fact that she's working on it, uh, the same issues you talk about, and I know that, uh, there'll probably be a time we're gonna have that discussion as a commission. Right now, the only thing before us now is to put together a policy that, uh, our way of doing, either we do this as a one-time. If we go the way I'm asking, where we're doing it over, you know, the years, then we're gonna continue to do this, and your questions would be very valid, uh, to go right through the, uh, HR and come to us in the next form of our discussions. And I would think that, uh, for any individual, we'd want every office to have the same access that you just had to be able to speak for their individuals as well, and what they'd like to see, uh, for the employees that are working directly below them. But in my opinion, that's not this discussion. This is a discussion of this compensation strategy and how to implement it, uh, with, uh, those other conversations to come forward sooner rather than later, I would hope. And I think that Mary, uh, could set up something with the Commission for us to have more regular talks about individual positions.
All right, Commissioner Shutey, any comments?
Yeah, thanks. Um,
Yeah, thanks. So I'm I'm also supportive of option two here, and I think for a couple of reasons, you know, mostly though, I think because it puts us on a it puts us on a more of a predictable or stable path forward in terms of addressing this issue over 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 time and not letting it get too far off from our from our you know, our own radar and all that kind of stuff. So I think the option two makes a lot of sense. This is a big investment, and so I think breaking it up like that makes sense, and it it brings further parity between how we do wage increases for our represented staff as well. So definitely supportive of option two. I think Mary has a you know, we'll continue working with the sheriff's office on on their issues and you hang around long enough and you you hear certain things repeat themselves over and over again and we didn't have lieutenants for a little while. Now we have lieutenants again, and now we're talking about compression again, and so it's 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 familiar at least. So there's that, but I think I think Mary has some strategies in mind that I hope she keeps working with the sheriff's office on to address those issues and this this isn't the this isn't the last conversation that we're gonna have on this, and I think probably one of the things that I've I want us to keep in mind, and one of the concerns about how we had previously been handling the non-rep scale. You know, just wanting to make sure that there's a clear and consistent strategy and approach to it for far too long decades, you know, the the non-rep pay scale was done very piecemeal. It was, you know, very, as Commissioner Netherland mentioned, it was either because we had a you know, a kind of a fire that we need to put out, or we had to address something. And it was always, it was always super short-sighted. But I think this gives us an opportunity to take a longer look at it, keep it keep it more on the forefront and continue to address issues as they come up, but doing it in the framework of a of a strategy that that Mary's developing along with Mark and and presenting to us today. So definitely supportive of option two.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I I support option two as also Travis, I want to thank you for sending your the email and and addressing your concerns, and I also want to thank you for working with Mary and with Mark. I think this is a a process, and within it are a lot of steps. And and so bringing those concerns forward helps us understand more about where we need to tweak. What issues we need to address, and so I truly appreciate you coming forward and expressing your concerns with us. And then I also really look forward to you working with Mary and Mark in getting those positions fixed. Compression has always been an issue. I know when I came here, this entire non-rept pay was a deep concern for me. And so I'm super excited that we're this far and that we're fixing a lot of shall I say, issues. And so moving forward, I think that it's gonna it's gonna get fixed. We'll be we'll be on a good path forward. And I'm just glad that we're getting it fixed and we're not pushing it down that road.
Could I have one alibi, Commissioner?
Sure.
Thank you. So I I I appreciate Commissioner Netherland's point that you're you're talking about a package here. And and that this is the first step in the process, but I I do have to push back a little bit and say while I I agree that we're talking about a package here, we are taking steps that are impacting those chiefs' positions. The proposal uncouples the corrections chief from the patrol chief and puts them on separate places on the pay scale where they are not now. It's creating a situation where a corrections lieutenant makes the same amount of money and is on the same spot in the scale as a patrol lieutenant, but somehow a corrections chief is now on a different scale than the patrol chief. And it's it's creating we are taking steps that are changing things that are beyond just the package that you're talking about. They create questions that I can't answer and quite frankly, creates equity questions that did not exist before. And so while I appreciate what you're saying, and I will continue to work with Mary, I feel it's appropriate to push back just a little bit and say it actually is causing some issues by not taking this extra step.
Madam Chair, before Mark, before you speak, I want to say, undersheriff, just something you really, I'd really like you to know. Almost everything except for the very last piece that you mentioned, we're blessed right now. We have some great people around us. I've actually been briefed on almost everything you spoke of already, and we've been talking about it behind the scenes through staff, through Mark and and Mary. I mean, literally, please don't think we didn't hear you or understand you, because we did. And it's already been being addressed and spoke about. It's just not part of this. But it has. I I've got a full briefing except for that very last piece that you mentioned about the corrections chief, which we'll find out more about now after hearing that. We have, there have been discussions the last few days more especially, and I just wanted you to know that. We hear, not only hear you, but they're already working on it.
Okay, and I and I totally appreciate that, and I know that Mary was working on it because she started working on it the same day that we talked about it. And we've been going back and forth on this new fancy teams thing. So that's that's why I said, you know, no no negative aspersions towards Mary, Mark, and all the work that staff has been doing. They've been very communicated well and and nothing but positive. So I just don't want this this issue to to get lost in political inertia and not be revisited again for two years because because we took a small step, because it is in our mind a step backwards in a couple ways, and I don't want to see that get locked into long-term policy.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mark. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. If this is if this is gonna create an issue. Well, first first and foremost, I want to I want to remind everyone that when Mary's briefed the board on this before, she's been very clear, hopefully, that we were unable to address all positions, right? So these are the positions where we were able to actually find comps to. So we're always comparing our comparable positions in other counties that at least meet that seventy percent. And that and that's that's how we actually move forward with this. If this is, and so we will continue to look into those other positions that are unique. Because just because they're unique doesn't mean we shouldn't address them, right? I mean, I think it's I think we have an opportunity to dive deeper into a smaller list. My concern, and I think Mary maybe would share this concern with me, is if we try and fix everything at once, then it's gonna, we're we're never gonna implement it, right? I mean, we gotta, we gotta take bite pieces and move forward. So if this is gonna create an inequity issue for the sheriff's office, maybe we can just pull the sheriff's positions that are included in this off and go back and reevaluate the concerns that Travis has and bring those forward at a later date.
I I have a maybe an alternative to that. So if we take action on this on the twenty-eighth, there's, you know, there's also, you know, two weeks of time where you know, maybe a resolution could be addressed, you know, and on the twenty, I mean, I'm prepared to move forward. We continue working on these other issues that are, you know, kind of associated with it. I don't want to hold the whole policy hostage, you know, over over some of these things that are currently being worked on where we still have a couple of weeks before we might actually even take a vote on this to get them resolved. So I, you know, I think that we, there's plenty of ways that we could go about that, but I think just wanting to not lose this placeholder on the on the next meeting, I think is just really important to keep things moving.
And I agree. I'd like to continue to move forward. We're the commission. There's no reason why we can't continue to have conversations at any time of the year, not just at this spot moment or that spot moment. As I said before, I'm I'm aware that Mark and Mary have been working on it, and I know that we're gonna be briefed on it. I don't know what their timeline is, but their timeline is gonna be correct, because that's when they have the information to bring it to us. So I'm comfortable just moving forward with what we have, and we'll continue to make the changes as necessary before we have the vote, if that's the appropriate thing, and if not, then we'll figure something else at the time.
Well, I think there's no pressure, Mark and Mary. I mean, if we, if you brief us before the our meeting on the twenty-eighth. Because we have a briefing on the twenty-seventh, we also have a briefing next week.
I I I'm trying to, I'm trying to protect Mary a little bit in terms of how much she has on her plate. It's sometimes easy for me to sit back and say, yeah, Mary can do this and Mary can do that, and and when you look at the total package of work that she's working on, how do I prioritize that for her so that she can be successful? Absolutely understand the undersheriff's concerns, don't want to create issues within the sheriff's office. So that's why my recommendation was if we can if we can just pull those off, then then it doesn't create that, and we continue to move forward. I think there's a lot of pieces that he referred to that have not been determined yet. So to really look at that entire package. I mean, I I I think that we need to look at it from a perspective of where it is, the where does the deputy's contract end up?
Mark, is there anybody getting through this action that would get less pay?
No.
See, that is a possibility. So if I don't see where the actual problem is with moving forward right now, since it's not like it changes somebody's structure and brings them down. And even if that was the case, we would wire rate them immediately, but that's not even the case here. There's
I I think it I I creates, what I heard the undersheriff says, it creates disparity within his executive ranks, correct, Travis?
Yeah, I I mean, the the real issue is that with right now, the chief in corrections being uncoupled from the chief in patrol. That moves him to a different spot on the pay scale, doesn't change the pay. But I don't want to slow down the rest of the package because it does partially fix the issue that we have with the administrative chief being paid less than a lieutenant right now. So to to pull that off the table and then, you know, create a problem there as well, because this is partially fixing that. So I I would much rather move on knowing that we're going to have some conversations, but I'd prefer to have those conversations sooner rather than later, so I can tell my corrections chief that we're we're actively addressing the situation.
And and I think you can, I mean, I think you can. I don't, you know, I mean, you can handle that however you want, but I think there's a there's a strong commitment from the three of us to continue using this framework to to make those adjustments as as we get you know, is it is the criteria fits and the, you know, the the data is there and everything like that. So I mean, I think, you know, Travis, your point there is, you know, it's like, well, if we if we pulled, if we pulled them all off and kind of held, you know, held them aside for these other things to kind of sort themselves out on your side, then you're you're also creating an inequity that way. So we we just kind of have to pick the, we have to kind of pick the inequity that we're most comfortable with right now. And the one that I'm most comfortable with right now is is having the civil deputy position get fixed or moved up and having these, you know, and and then, because and then we're just talking about kind of where things, you know, settle out from there, creating a new a new high watermark, so to speak. So I'd rather err on that side and then let the let the rest of the work get handled on where we go from here.
As would I, Madam Chair. I've seen Mary lips moving three different times and never heard a single thing come out of her, and I don't know what's going on there, but if she's got something, I'd love to hear it.
I might be safer that way. I don't know.
Still can't hear you, Mary. That's why I was saying, you were speaking, but nothing, we couldn't hear you anything on on this side.
How about now?
Yes, there you are.
Oh, my gosh, I don't know what happened. So I I was just gonna say that you know, there's a, yeah, I would prefer not to be rushed, because this is the sheriff's office is not they're not that, they're special, but they're not, they're not unique in the fact that this is something that we have seen in a couple different areas, and so them needing further analysis and the data that is reflected in these suggested changes is based on the position descriptions that we were given initially. So there is a process. We'll get a new class spec created. I'm just about done with it. And then we'll need to go out to market and have our consultant make sure that we're out with our comps based on the updated class spec. And then there will be a recommendation to bring forward, just like a couple other of our positions we haven't been able to address yet. So there is a set process on how we'll do that.
Good job, Barry.
That sounds good.
Okay, so I'm hearing option one, two, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So I will get a resolution ready for the twenty, whatever, eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
Okay, so that will bring me into my next item, which is the memorandum of understanding with AFSMI. The county and AFSMI are closing the loop on a quote me too clause for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two collective bargaining agreement. This is to address a point two-five percent that was given to another unit that AFSMI has a clause for, and the approximate budget impact would be thirty-seven hundred dollars. So looking for approval to move that to the action agenda.
Madam Chair, first, thank you to Mary, Mark, Abbott, Dow, and Associates, and AFSMI and their representation, their representatives in putting all this together and getting this behind us. I am definitely in favor of putting on the agenda, but I wanted to give thank yous all the way around because this, there was a lot of good work that went into this from everybody, and I don't want that to go unnoticed by the public. Thank you, staff, and AFSMI.
Commissioner Shu.
Yeah, supportive of this as well.
As am I. Great job. Thank you, guys.
Our next item is a lead pay request for Tom Gibbons out of the assessor's office. This position is going to be tasked with creating a reevaluation of assignments, kind of overseeing, reviewing assignments and leading day-to-day work of and training of appraisers. He may also be asked to oversee the office in the absence of the assessor and the chief deputy. This provision was added to the appraiser's contract via last action agenda, so they would be eligible for this now. So they would see Tom would be eligible to begin receiving lead pay. We'd like to do it March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and then obviously have this lead position reevaluated as part of the budget process like other leads are in the county.
So Mary, it meets recommendations and it meets your requirement, and you're speaking in favor of it, right?
Correct.
I support.
I do as well.
And just one question. Now, is is this going to be a permanent change in this job description?
Yeah, this would be just the lead pay, so it's just an additional lead responsibilities. It is not a change to the actual position description or a vacancy or any other and HR-related change to that, this situation.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, I'm I'm supportive as well.
And then I have a second request out of the public defender's office, and this is lead pay for Rose Boulton. She's also being tasked with lead assignments, you know, indigent defense has had to make some adjustments over there as their workloads continue to increase, and so Rose will be overseeing and reviewing assignments and then training any new attorneys that come on. And this will be a general fund supplement, and again, March sixteenth through December thirty-first. And then reevaluated as part of budget.
And again, this meets our our policy requirements, and after reviewing them, this is your recommendation as HR that it fits.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm supportive.
I am as well.
All right, so am I.
I remind the commission, we had a lot of years where we had a lot of that stuff that was dropped on us. The reason why you've asked that question for the public, they were just dropped on us without going through, without meeting the requirements of HR, and without the recommendation of HR, they come to us. And we didn't know they weren't recommending at HR at the time. So now we've cleaned up a lot of that, but still we just want to make sure and tell them. You said enough times where I don't doubt it every time it comes up.
And I think that's all the items I have today. Thank you.
So one of the, one of the things I'd like to add to this last request is just some recognition for Rose. Rose is responsible for the lower cases, so based on our briefing last week that we had with our public defender's office, our district court administration, as well as the prosecuting attorney's office. Rose plays a critical role in this process, and so there's as you get to the lower-level cases, there's more than she can handle just within her own plate. And so she's actually a large part of that process of of assigning those lower cases. Peter was successful, our public defender was successful in Uh Peter was successful, our public defender was successful in contracting with two new attorneys. Uh to come in and and actually do uh cover some of the cases that that Rose will be. Kind of pushing to them in this lead role, uh and mentoring the attorneys that are assigned to that and the process that they need to follow. And uh it really puts us in a place where we can breathe again, right? So I think in the past month, it's felt. Extremely critical in the sense that uh that we didn't have enough attorneys and. And it was really difficult for us to find attorneys to come in and cover this from the outside. Uh recognition to Peter for going out and getting those ones signed up. Uh and taking on additional cases and definitely recognition for Rose for taking on this lead role and and really managing this caseload. Um to a degree that was not expected.
And that's why we're not having a briefing on it this time, uh it's already been taken care of and fixed, so special thank you to all of them, uh Peter and and Rose. And you guys.
Yeah, Mary's Mary's definitely been working with Peter and Mary and her staff have been working with Peter to to get the word out and and recruit. Um the the long term solution requires staff people, uh and so we're continuing to to go out and try and find somebody to come in and fill that role.
It's great.
So the next two items are mine, um and and again, this is kind of a continuation of our last briefing that we had, we were talking about county administrator responsibility. So I want to follow up with you all on some conversations that I had with uh Tim Whitehead. And so after our our meeting, Tim and I kind of talked over the phone about what does this look like in terms of letters of support? And um and and Tim really opened my eyes up to the the public perception side of this process. And in that, being a county government where our commissioners make decisions on these types of things, it's important to do it in a public format. Um so what that means is that there may be times where we're unable to provide a letter of support just due to the timing. So Port of Shelton actually requested this letter of support last week, midweek. I think it was on Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday. And uh and and it was due by Friday, um so I contacted Wendy and let her know uh that since the port had never really, since the. Board of County Commissioners have never really talked about this topic, that I wasn't comfortable in providing a letter of support for this topic, and so we did not. Provide a letter of support to the Port of Shelton and um the deadline for that. Application process uh closed on Friday. The next item, though.
So on that, Mark, uh you know, it was me that brought up that issue and worried about Daisy Chan and it became a real, a real concept. But I want to remind you, uh on time set is short, we are in a public meeting right now. And we are on on Mondays when we don't have a Tuesdays, and I think that it's important to actually have a complete public vote if the commission are going to sign. But I think you could also get a head nod from the commission through a public meeting right now to tell you to sign something uh also. Uh so if you talk, check back with them, but yeah, as I said, that was me that brought that out, because I was worried about that. And it turned out to be accurate, but if you double check, I believe that we're having a meeting now, and if your commissions in this discussion or any discussion in the future says, go ahead. I think that you're okay to go ahead and sign it, but I think for us to sign it, we need to have a an actual vote during our regular meeting as well.
I I completely agree with you, Commissioner. Um in in this scenario with the Port of Shelton, I didn't have an opportunity to meet with all three of you in a public setting. Uh before the due date of the letter, and so that's why we I didn't sign on to this one. Uh but when you go to the next one, the letter of support for the Ark of Peninsula's. Uh this is a topic that the commissioners and I discussed in previous meetings. And the commissioner expressed, the commissioners as a whole expressed interest in supporting. The Ark of the Peninsula's and moving forward with their Union River Affordable Housing Project up in the Belfair area for legislative requests. Um this is just a different source of money that they're actually going and looking for. Uh concept is exactly the same as what you approved last time, and so I actually did provide the Ark of Peninsula's. Um a letter signed under the county administrators. Authority um to to support this project.
And you're just saying it now as in in the form of advising consent. I appreciate it, thank you.
Any questions from other commissioners on that process or concerns?
No, I'm glad you did it.
Yeah, that's I think you handled it well.
Great, thank you. And that's all I had for you. Actually, did we have, I there was, I think there's another topic, and do you want to bring that up now, Commissioner Shudy? Do you remember what it was?
I do not. Do you want to bring it up, Mark Mary?
Dang it, I was hoping you'd remember, so let's let's. I'll bring it up later.
Okay, yeah, oh, yeah.
That was entertaining.
Commissioners, do we have, do you have anything that we need to discuss?
No, just I'm sure whatever they were discussing is awesome.
I quickly want to um wish Nicole a happy birthday too.
Oh, yes, happy birthday, uh Commissioner Trask, happy birthday, Nicole. I think we ought to sing to him personally.
No, I do not think that that is necessary.
You are the chair.
Completely not necessary, thank you very much.
Oh, wait, I saw Nicole for about half a second.
Thank you. Alright, Mark, anything else?
No, nope. Still haven't found it, yeah, so that's okay, uh if I if I find it, uh I'll bring it up under Commissioner Discussion. And move on, it looks like community, community development is next, and Kel's gonna present some some reports that we've been working on.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Uh let me. So we've been, I think it's been over a year since I started saying we were gonna um. Brief the board either monthly or quarterly or whatever on permit numbers, so. Um continuing to work on right sizing that, um in the spreadsheets, you'll have. The list of all of the application types, so you could see what's come in, it looks like we put in last year's January and February and then this year's, but the. Dates are cut off, so I'm not positive, but you know, this year our permit numbers are down a bit uh compared to last year. We were preparing for that and are aware of that, um and um. But uh working closely with Kathy on our budget, we're still good and no worries there. Um the other. Report is the average days to issuance, and so Mariah's been working on a new report um that will show. Um monthly um or quarterly if we choose to go that route, and then we compare uh. We'd like to compare it with last year's as well, so same time to see or just overtime to see, you know, for doing better or worse or what have you. Um we didn't get a chance for her to run the report from last year, so we don't have a comparable, but if you look at January's. Um average to issuance um compared to with February, we did decrease. Part of that is that we have fewer permits coming in, and so we're able to catch up on the building side there, so. Um you could see some outliers, some anomalies um with a few things, um in that you could just assume that. You know, there's been some back and forth between the um the county and the applicant. Um, you know, we we checked on a couple of these and it was like we had to put it on hold while we were waiting for additional information from the applicant. Um our smart of system allows us to do what's called a stop clock. Um and we haven't all fully figured out how to use that, that's part of what we are training in June. Um we'll get everybody on the same page so that we'll be able to stop the clock when the applicant. Uh needs to get additional information so that we're not running it and making it uh appear as though. Um the county is just sitting on a permit, so um. Over time, we think our, the um reporting will be a little more accurate than it's likely reflecting today, just. Based on our software system, how we're using all the little, all the little tools and um, yeah, so. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Yes, Commissioner.
Uh Kel, I would love to, and you, I don't expect you to know right now, but could you please look into the anomalies on the on the positive side? I see some that are five days on a additional remodel, why? How did they get it done in five days? I see some that are twenty nine, eight. Uh, make the difference.
Yep, so um Todd Cunningham and Josh uh Luck have been working very hard in the back on training. Um folks, the inspectors on plan review, so. Um we do have a couple folks that stay inside, do plan review uh full time. But the rest of the folks are inspectors go out in the field and as they're um getting uh more time under their belt, they're also being trained on. Plan review, so on some of those smaller projects, um. You know, the garage, storage, manufactured homes, and so we have multiple people now doing plan review on some of the simpler, smaller projects. And so we are seeing a quicker turnaround time on those, um while still trying to keep, keep up with the the larger projects.
Great, any other questions, Kel? Comments?
Uh no, no question, just a a comment, I appreciate seeing this, you know, I I think one of the areas that I've I've always struggled with is knowing, you know, kind of like. What is the right, what are the right metrics to to judge? Our success on in community development, and I know that there are bills going through the legislature right now that would. You know, have um you know, like a forty five day uh permitting window for for different, you know, single family residences or or anything like that, and so. You know, just sort of recognizing um that you're able to to do that stop clock feature because it it that. We shouldn't be penalized because people are, you know, have incomplete packets or because um you know, there's there's uh additional. Uh engineering or design work that needs to be done, or there needs a different level of of review and and all that kind of stuff, so. Really interested to learn more about, you know, just when that, when that clock is running and when that's on us and when you're able to stop it and what those triggers are and. Um you know, cause that, if we're just looking at everything in aggregate and not putting it in context, you know, some of those, some of those projects that are taking a long time could skew. Our, you know, average days to issuance, which, you know, I I just, so I think it's, I think just. Being able to, once you get a little bit more training with your staff, to be able to share some of that with us so that we're. We're prepared to do two things, one, understand the process better from your all's perspective. But also so that we're able to put things in the appropriate context when, you know, when we're having community conversations and. Um you know, what, sometimes, you know, there's. Sort of myths out there about what uh you know, what really goes on in the planning department when you drop off your permit request and, you know, do they just go into some like. Void in the back of the room and never to be seen again, you know, for two hundred and eighty one days or whatever. You know, so uh just I think continuing to even educate and train us on. Um you know, what the appropriate metrics are, how you measure them. Um and and then ultimately just, you know, sort of being clear about where you want to head. Um you know, with uh with with those timelines and and what you need to get there, and and I think, I think those are really good conversations for us to have, so. Excited to see this on a on a more regular basis, this is a great start.
And I'm super excited the way that your your department is growing and and. And coming together and working together well, I think with in in to include other departments also. I'm super excited about that as well.
Yeah, we've come a long way since uh twenty twenty.
Yeah, alright, any other questions or comments for Kel? Or Kel, do you have anything else for us?
Um I was gonna just give a brief update on the scanning project, and then we're also considering in-house, if you guys are ready for that. Okay, so uh this is just a really generic kind of update, um. And then we're looking, uh I'll be working with Mariah and the team on what metrics do we want to share on a monthly or quarterly basis with. The board on on our scanning project, so um you know, we did receive ARPA funds and that allowed us to hire two new staff, we have. Um Cat Brewer and Asatia Baker. And I apologize if I got their last names mixed up, but I think that's correct, um and they they both started right after um the holidays. Uh beginning of January and we did hire or we had to purchase a new scanner. And then we had an 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 initial scanner that we've had, so the first two and a half months now, we just kind of. They did a lot of cleanup organizing, we had to make room for folks, um and so they are now. Really underway of like scanning, going through the documents and scanning them. Um and that's been going on for several weeks now, but it but it didn't start. January third, so now we're going to look at the next three months on. Um the amount of paper that they're going through, the amount of boxes or, you know, the files and where they're at, so then we could estimate the entire project. Um so we think we'll have a good, i- in the next three months, we'll have a a good indicator of how many years we think this is going to take us. Based on, you know, the amount of um file cabinets we have around the office, but. We have gotten rid of two full file cabinets, the full uh four drawer, uh wide length file cabinets. Um just getting rid of papers um in just tossing the uh. Uh transitory records as well as um scanning some things in, so that's. Um one major thing, they estimated probably, let's see, two hundred pounds of paper recycled in January and February. Um for duplicate and transient documents, um and probably another hundred and twenty five pounds. Um that have been scanned and designated for destruct destruction, um and so we'll just. We'll just keep kind of tracking all these different indicators and then see what metrics um the commission is interested in hearing. Uh from us on, but it's uh already looking a little transformed over here, so it's exciting, we gained a little. Lunch table space because of uh things we're getting rid of, so um so it's kind of fun, fun for me anyway.
I think that's exciting, I'm glad it's, I'm glad it's going well. Alright, anything for Kel? Nope, seeing head shake, so. Alright, thank you, Kel. Alright, let's move on to Public Works. Loretta.
Actually, I believe we have, uh Loretta is is in a meeting with Senator Leas this morning. Uh with our lobbyists to talk about transportation projects, and so um it's been bounced around a few times and uh this is the time that we. We get with the senator, so uh I asked Loretta to attend that meeting and represent the county.
Yeah, incredibly important, thank you.
Morning Commissioners, uh first off, we have is our two thousand twenty three annual bridge report. Uh every year, we're required to update our bridge report and send it to CRAB, and we currently are maintaining uh. Inspection reports for seventy two structures, fifty of them are concrete, fourteen are timber or timber composite, seven culverts. And the one bridge from the city of Shelton uh on the seventh street, we inspect that one too, so. Um required by the F F H W A, uh we have to inspect these bridges at a minimum of every two years. And a little bit what's in the report is, uh we have three bridges that are posted for load restrictions only. Uh that's Ike Bridge, Lower Duato and Stretch Island. And then uh next critical factor would be scour critical. Um there's five bridges that are scour critical, and what that means is there's a calculation for how deep. Or the depth of scour would go below uh the spread footing, so. What we have to do there is have to have a plan of action for any type of uh storm event, a large storm event, so we do have that. The unfortunate thing we have here is we have thirty structures that are unknown foundations, and unknown foundations are. We have no records of their piling tips or their uh uh footing elevations, and so we have to treat them as though they're scour critical. And so we have a plan of action for each one of those bridges too. Uh sufficiency rating, sufficiency rating is a way to compare bridges, so apple to apple, so. Uh zero is bad, one hundred is brand new, um we only have four structures that are rated below fifty. Um which is, you know, that's that's pretty awesome. Um and two of those structures we're working on, Harstein Island uh Bridge uh is getting a polymer. Um polyester polymer uh deck overlay this year, and the North Fork of Gold's Row Bridge is getting a. Cap replacement, so. Um a lot of work went into the the uh report, Dave, Jeremy, uh Ginger all pitched in, and so uh. So we're happy with what we got.
It just amazes me how many bridges we have.
Well, with these uh with these fish barrier culverts, we keep adding bridges because of that. Because there's so large a structure, so.
Alright, I don't want to make sure that those wells can get through.
Right, right. Next up, we have uh Union Transfer Station, I believe Richard's on.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning, Richard.
Uh this is a just discussion item, we had a neighboring. Landowner asking for an easement, uh wants to purchase an easement from us and. Loretta has a couple of options here for you to consider, and I'd like to share my screen if that's alright.
Sure.
Alright, let's see, share screen. Okay. So hopefully you can see that.
Yep.
All right. This, this, uh, basically you can see the Hayes property there. And then you can see the, the blue line, which depicts the easement that they would like to do. That is option one. And, uh, let me see if I can show you option two. So it's very clear. Apologize for this.
No worries.
Okay. I'm not showing the one I want. Was it the very next? There you go. There you go. How's that? That, that shows the two different, the orange lines are the easement, potential easement. And then the, or darkened out area with the blue border would be the other option is buying that property, which is about thirteen acres. And, uh, the, let's see, the person that would like to, uh, that he would be the Hayes people that would like to have that easement. If they were to purchase it, either way, they, they'd have to get it appraised at their own cost.
What do we have there? What do we have around it? Uh, what purpose is, is only that land for us?
You know, that on that side of that ravine, not much. On the left side, the part that's not, that's, that's our union transfer station, our Dropbox facility.
Okay.
So that's, that's what we use it for.
Is, is that an R twenty? Or is it an R ten? What do we have? For zoning.
Kel still on? I, I really don't know. It cannot be, I could tell you, it cannot be, uh, subdivided anymore.
Commissioners, it's an R five.
Oh, it's an R five. So it could be subdivided then.
Yeah, it could.
Okay.
To answer your question, um, the, the piece that is on the east side of the ravine is also landlocked for us unless we were to obtain an easement somewhere else. Or, um, get an HPA and construct probably a pretty costly crossing of the ravine just to the north of our transfer station.
And I'm looking at this other one. If it's an R five, though, Richard is also still right that the one part can't be subdivided. Uh, so you'd actually either have to sell the whole thing or you'd have to do a boundary line adjustment and, uh, turn the, uh, four point eight five acres, uh, give half of it to the twenty-six acres up above and the other half of it to the other parcel that's going to be created.
Yeah, that is correct.
They'd have to pay for all that too. So if, if that was the case.
If I, hey, Richard, could I do a quick screen share?
Yeah.
Thank you. That was the, um, the other option, I think, that was in your packet, Commissioners. I'm, I'm, apologies for joining late here.
No apology necessary.
So, uh, this is, I think, what you were describing, Commissioner Netherland. Where there would need to be like a boundary line adjustment. So the, the four point eight that was down here.
Yeah.
Within, yeah, we do a boundary line adjustment. And this is one potential configuration, just kind of following the ravine. And that would leave the thirteen acres on one side and, um, leave the county ownership with about roughly eighteen acres, if you will.
Yeah, I think we'd have to because you can't, you can't subdivide below five acres, uh, if it's an R five, R, R five.
Right.
You can't make it non, not, you know, it's already non.
Non-conforming, yeah.
More non-conforming.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know. Be, if it is already non-conforming, maybe it could be. I don't know.
I, I tend to think that when you have the, the opportunity to do something like this, uh, planning would want you to bring it into a conforming lot.
Makes sense. That's what, you know, the planning commission, that's what we've always asked for.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And we have no, we have no use for it?
We do not have any use that I am aware of. But that said, Commissioner, we have not brought this to the, um, uh, the committee that looks at surplusing land. So it's possible if we were to bring that to that committee, um, that someone else within the county government would have a potential use for that property.
Well, if we're going to consider selling it, we have to do those processes.
Yes, absolutely.
Miss Ravine is pretty steep. Do you know, did, did, do they already have the easement through the property down below?
They have a verbal commitment as far as I'm aware, Commissioner Trask, but they do not have an easement in hand.
Now then comes the other part. Would we be selling landlocked land?
Not if the person were to able to secure this, this blue easement here.
Well, he also has easement of some sorts on the other side. I'm looking at him.
Uh, they, he has approached the property owners to the north and east. And, um, they have offered to sell an easement, but.
There has to be some kind, you can, he, he could not have bought landlocked land. Somewhere there was a extent, there was an easement through, uh, through adverse possession or something.
Yeah. And he would need to fo- follow some legal remedies to secure that.
And I'm only asking that not because I want him to do that. That may not be truly accessible over there. I'm just saying it that I don't want to get in trouble for selling landlocked land.
Right.
I'd support at least putting it to the committee and find out if it's, uh, surplusable first.
So, so the commission would be interested in exploring the sale of the thirteen acres if possible? As opposed to a easement?
Unless we have a use for that land, I would rather not have all the liabilities and stuff that come with, uh, especially if he decides to subdivide the other or something up there.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, um, I think let's run it through the surplus process and, and get some more information that way. This is, this has been, this has been kind of a complex or complicated one to, to wade through, I think. But it, it sounds like Loretta and Richard have started to piece some things together that, that might make a little bit more sense for us. So no harm in running it through that process as we continue to work on it.
Right. I believe this has been brought to us previously too. So moving forward and doing the correct processes is fine with me. Good idea.
Hey, great. We will bring it to the committee and, um, I will follow up with the landowner and let them know. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And thank you for meeting with, um, Senator also.
Yes.
Were, were you able to, were you able to make the meeting and?
I was able to make the meeting.
He held his, he held his.
I, I was, we, we were trumped by another senator, but definitely were able to meet and, and share good information. So, um, that was all good.
Good.
Awesome. All right. So now you have the Shetland Road already.
Uh, yes. Uh, so over here at Platte of Lake Limerick, there is a private road that connects up to Sunny Woods. And this, this road is, uh, privately owned. It's one point three miles. And the property owners over the years have been trying to find ways to upgrade it. Um, and they've come up with suggesting an RID. So back in two thousand and sixteen, I believe we went through a process pretty in-depth of, of, uh, coming up with an estimate for uh, the improvement and what it would mean for each property owner. And, uh, I think that's in some of your data we sent to you there. Um, I think the, uh, the most recent estimate is three hundred and sixty-five thousand, somewhere around there. And it would cost each, uh, property owner about six hundred and twelve dollars annually for a ten-year, uh, bond. Um, so Mr. Terry Albers, you see the, uh, the letter from him, uh, that's, uh, he's requesting that the board go ahead and initiate an RID.
Which is, I met with him also and I made some phone calls to Loretta. And I myself, uh, 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 talking to her, she believes that we can extend that up to twenty years. And if we could do it with no interest, then that changes their dynamic too, to where they're literally two fifty or so. And this could be a start of projects that we can start to do to have people cover their own uh, needs with the county still helping. And again, I'm basing my information off the conversation I had with Loretta. Loretta will double check that. But, uh, uh, so if possible to help these folks out to get it started, I'd like to look at twenty-year and no interest.
All right. I did see Lisa unmute herself.
Hi. So I'm not sure where you would get a loan with no interest in order to do this, because we would have to go out and do a bond unless this money is coming from somewhere within the county that I'm not aware of. Um, but anytime you make a loan, we would have to collect interest on that.
Okay. What if we did it internal? What kind of rate would we have to collect? How much were we looking? Cause it, it had changed with the, uh, we did our own math, not based on their old stuff and, uh, found there was a, there was a cheaper way of doing it. What did we come up to with the, the final number, Mike?
Um, been looking at, uh, that we have is three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um, I'm, I'm very comfortable about bringing it under that price. So that's, that's where we're at right now. And that's doing, uh, a little bit of drainage work and, uh, then redoing the base and, and then, uh, a double chop, chop chip seal on the surface. So.
To answer your ques- question, Commissioner Netherland, I, I do believe that if we do an interfund loan, that we're required to charge market rate interest. So normally that is done off of, uh, what we're earning on the LGIP. And Treasurer Fraser, I'm sure could provide us those details. Cause I think.
We, we need to pay that back usually within three years. Which to help them, we need to extend it out to twenty, not.
Right. So interfund may not be the.
Yeah.
Yeah. An interfund loan can only be a maximum five, three to five years. I don't know that you would find a bank that would go less than ten years. Um, and to go twenty years, you would have to be able to provide proof that that, um, asset is going to last that long. So. The current state poll rate is four point six percent currently.
And we'd be bringing it in, into our banks, right?
That is correct, Commissioner. That's part of the process. It would become a county road. And then, um, that way we can expand and make expenditures on that road.
And our ID is a separate process, a billing process as well. It's not part of the property tax statement. So it's a separate billing that the treasurer's office would do as well. So.
So they would get like a separate statement?
That's correct. And generally it's an annual statement.
Now, we did not, when I was sitting with him, uh, doing the calculation and talking with Loretta, we did not include interest, but it spread out over twenty years. Uh, they were pretty close to the same position they're in now for the fees they already pay. So it's not a hardship on them at all.
And Commissioners, in previous conversations with, um, Mr. Alber and, and some other folks from, from the, um, the neighborhood, they were prepared to, they understood that the terms were the ten and with interest. So, um, if we were able to do something to improve that, that would be a bonus. But, um, they were well aware of what the, the ten-year and the interest rate was at that time.
Yeah. And I think they still had a couple of that were a little bit on the fence. I may be wrong, but I don't know. Again, if we can help them, I want to help them. It seems like they're, they're willing to pay their share. And that's the only thing I, I ask. Commissioner Shu, you've been working with them. Where, where do you sit on this?
Yeah. No, I think, I think we should move forward with this. And I, you know, I mean, if, if kind of let them, let them indicate what kind of payment our, um, you know, timeline they prefer. I mean, if, if, if we can do a twenty-year and that's amenable to them, that's, that's fine. If not, I'm also fine with that. But they, they, they've done a ton of work to try to get to this point. And I just don't want us to be the barrier to, to, you know, why it doesn't get done. So I'm, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to support the community up there and get some, uh, get some road improvements done.
This is our first one in many years, right, Loretta?
It would be, Commissioner. It's been a long time since, uh, the county has initiated an RID. Lisa's shaking her head. Yes.
Free Lisa. So, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's one of the main benefits of this, because I know we have other places that we've talked about as commissioners that need roads uh, and need them put in. This will help to establish how to do it and what to do. I think this is a, a great thing and the great time to do it.
Yeah, that's good, good to hear, Commissioners. And as Commissioner Shudy said, the community has put a ton of work and a bunch of legwork in this. And um, it will be nice to, to move forward.
Well, I'm on a dirt road and it's a pain in the neck to, uh, maintain that road. So especially with PD coming in, working on it for us too. So, well, not the road, but Lisa, do you have any more, any additional comments or?
I would just, um, make sure that, um, this comes before the finance committee. So we can do the legwork on getting loan information once you have, um, an amount.
Can we ask the, the finance committee to have a look at it at three different levels, ten, fifteen and twenty? Commissioners?
I, yeah, I, I would have you, that would, that would have to come before the finance committee. And we'd have to go out and see what we can find. We'd have to do an RFP for a loan.
Uh huh.
Like.
Oh, I'm good with it coming before the finance committee.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. And then Mike, this is something just to give everyone a sense of timing. So we can get rolling with the setting the hearing and all of that business. But, um, in terms of actual improvements, this would be a twenty-four project. Is that correct, Mike?
Yeah, that's, uh, by the time you get through the right away process, we're thinking, yeah, we'll be into next year for construction.
Yeah.
Plus time for the RFP and everything else too.
Yep.
That's if nobody holds out.
Is there an election process required to do this? Or is it like an LID?
It is similar to an LID mark. Yep. And, um, if it is initiated, um, there are two ways. One initiated by petition. And one initiated by the commission. And what we're talking about here is initiating by the commission. And then there's a, a time for testimony. Um, so folks can provide comment on the, the formation of the, the district.
Thank you.
And then at that time Commissioners can, um, consider that testimony and create and move forward or regroup or, or not create it.
What is their position, uh, for regress if they, if there are individuals that don't?
If there, I'm sorry, Commissioner, one more time.
If there are individuals who are not in support, that actually have on their title, uh, right of ways and stuff like that through there. What is their regress, redress, uh, of the issue? How can they? What do we have to look forward to if there's somebody standing in the way?
Well, from my understanding, um, Mr. Alber has contacted, I'm going to share with the screen here real quick again. If you bear with me. So there are only a handful. If you can see where this red line is. Um, this is Shetland.
Nothing on there. Your screen yet.
Oh, nope. Sorry. Share, share, Loretta.
There's a red line.
So this, uh, red line is Shetland. And these, uh, kind of grayish colored blocks here, these are the properties that the, um, who would be donating the right of way. And it is my understanding that all of those folks are, are willing to donate. And then there's some here that it's already been platted, um, and those would also be donated. And then there's some here that it's already been platted, um, and those would also be donations as well.
Okay, so if there's, again, if there is somebody who wants to stand in the way of it. What does that look like?
Uh. That means that we would not have the right of way dedicated to the county, so either we are um, pursuing condemnation or letting it drop. Or having a skinnier right of way.
Or work with them to get it through, okay. That's what I need to know, thank you.
You're welcome. Mark, or I'm sorry, Mike, any other thoughts on that?
Uh, well, there's two examples, one of. If they're adjacent to the road and they don't want to dedicate right away, then that's that's the process, the other one is, hey, I just don't want to pay in. Uh, to this and what has happened before is other. That the that payment gets spread out amongst the rest of the group in some cases. And so that's uh, that is another process, so.
That's a new one I'd never heard of. Thank you for that. Remember, I'm looking at this for many different other projects in the future and everything else, that's why these questions, not specifically for this one.
And it can be crafted that um, similar to, I'm not sure how the the lake management districts are, but if you qualify for. A senior tax deferral, that would be applicable here as well. No, Lisa's shaking dead.
It will not, does not affect a settlement.
Okay. All right.
And that's why we have her on here.
Yeah, yes, those are the fun details we can sort out with the finance committee and make sure we're we're on the straight and narrow.
Yeah.
Okay, well, any other discussion or questions Commissioners on this?
Nope.
At the moment.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for um, Public Works?
No, but I am curious if Mark ever figured out what we're gonna talk about.
I am. I found.
I did have, I did have one question uh for Loretta and probably Richard. Um. I think last, last week or maybe two weeks ago, we mentioned uh, our solid waste hauling. Contract and that coming up in August, and I just. Was curious is if you if you had a timeline for. When we would dig into that about an extension or. What that might look like or that whole process, so I I just, if you, if you had maybe just some initial thoughts on what that. Timeline looks like for us so that we're. Preparing ourselves.
Ms. Richards, the timeline is now. We just sent out a a survey of some of our fellow fellow agencies on their their contracts, we're. Meeting, um. I think tomorrow to discuss this a little bit further, and I know that Richard and Kelly have laid out. A timeline for if we go out for an RFP, what that looks like schedule wise.
Has anybody asked them yet if they're asking for an extension without a change in conditions?
Uh, that's part of our conversation tomorrow, and I believe that is the case, but we will confirm that, Commissioner.
I just want to go out there and say that somebody's been through this now several times, if they're willing to extend it, I'm tickled to death with that, we all know costs go up and stuff. If they're willing to extend it uh and keep control of that uh. That contract, I have no problem with an extension on that.
Yeah, and I I believe that is the case, but like I said, we will, we will confirm that. Um, we've also had some preliminary conversations with our um, chief deputy prosecuting attorney as well.
Good, yeah, this came up at my uh, Public Works board meeting. One of the board members had been contacted by you guys, so appreciate you guys reaching out to others.
Great, good, yeah, we had great, quick response. So definitely appreciate folks sharing.
Absolutely.
Thanks, that's all I had.
So it sounds like we have some uh, we have some meetings on that this week, Loretta, so do you think that we could come back with an update for the board on the twentieth?
We can, yes, Richard, I'm I'm speaking for you too, buddy, keep me straight.
Very carefully. No problems. That that is my full intent is be able to reap on Monday.
Perfect.
Sounds good, anything else for Public Works?
Oh, well, we wanted to have a nice little slideshow, but I didn't get that together, this is, I saw that uh, Naco said, this is two years of ARPA, since ARPA. Distribution, and so Commissioners, we're very grateful for the funds that we've received. And put to work and maybe next time we'll we'll have a quickie rundown of how we've put the ARPA funds to work for you, but again, thank you.
Oh, that would be great.
To hear.
Yeah, Richard, I think Richard has some some work that was recently done, right, Richard?
Yeah, yeah, actually, Lift Station Three just got the uh. The two existing pumps have been removed. And two new pumps. Are in place and operating fantastically, and the third pump has been, it it is there, it's been delivered. And it's stored inside the pump station on site, so Lift Station Three really is. I don't want to jinx it, but in my mind. Fifteen, twenty years.
That's awesome.
That is awesome.
All been pressure washed, it's uh, just getting dressed back up, it'll be in as new condition here in a month.
I'm looking forward to a slideshow.
You know, definitely, it'd be complete with a video.
And before and afters.
Right.
Yes.
Get a picture of it, but the videos. Definitely shows you the spray.
Very cool. All right, anything else?
So if this is an appropriate time, I did find what I was thinking about earlier.
Thank Loretta for coming and bringing her people, you've got awesome, you've got awesome staff, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, so I just wanted to update the board on some emails that have been going around about another opioid settlement, so. Um, as you may remember, we signed uh, onto a settlement agreement. With the manufacturers. Um, there's also another settlement agreement that's coming forward. For the distributors, I believe, and so this is like for Walgreens, CVS, Walmart, Tiva and Allard, Allergen. Um, and so the Attorney General Ferguson uh is working on a settlement with those five entities and. I will be bringing that before the board uh to sign on, we have a deadline of April eighteenth, twenty twenty three, to actually complete the forms and turn those in. Um, so just wanted to let you know that that is different than the original one, so if you saw some emails and there was a little bit of confusion, this is in addition to the. To the first settlement that was that was done with the manufacturers.
Right.
Also just um, mentioned just for a little bit of situational awareness, last week at the um, County's Opioid Stakeholder Group meeting, we had a presentation from. Uh, Chris Shara from the uh, Healthcare Authority. Um, and there's a number of these settlements that are are happening, and I I think he said, you know, like close to ten settlements overall. Um, so this is, you know, this is probably not the last time. We're going to be seeing something like this come in front of us, and so just appreciate Mark um. Bringing it forward and, you know, uh, keeping it on our our forefront, so these are, these are good opportunities for us to participate without having to. Having had to contribute to the actual um, litigation, so our community will be the beneficiary and rightly so.
Yep, agree. We get briefed of these um, during the WASAC. Meetings too, and so wanted to make sure that we were on top of these.
All right, Commissioners, any discussion?
Did we actually get through a meeting without adding something new on your Tuesday agenda?
No, we did.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was the RFP for concessions that.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
MTRA, so.
Almost this close.
Just one, though, one's not bad.
Pretty good for us, I mean.
Yeah.
Progress.
Mackenzie's not gonna be throwing stuff as we walk by.
No, she might anyway, but.
Just for one ass, it's good.
Yeah, we still love her.
Feed her, she'll be fine.
All right, anything further?
Move, we adjourn.
Before noon. All right, we are adjourned. Guys, have a nice day.
See you tomorrow.